Good morning. I will now call to order the Dakota County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. Jenny, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Gerlach?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Here.
Commissioner Egan?
Here.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Here.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Here.
Great. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. Okay, I will go out to the audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda or an item on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and I know we have some members in the audience this morning. Please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Mark G. Wagonconnect, 1097 245th Street East, Farmington, Minnesota, 5504.
How come?
I'm here in regards to the County Road 78 alignment project. I own the farm that is going to be most affected by this alignment. My neighbor to the west and to the south of my property, David Doubles, is also adversely affected with angle cutting of his property. First thing I want to do is say thank you for allowing me to speak. My mother and my father, Jerry and Naomi Wagonconnect, are here with me today, too. My wife is at work at Farmington Elementary School in the library, so she couldn't be with us. We appreciate all the work that the engineering team has put into this project. They've worked hard and diligently to try to come up with solutions to make this work that are less egregious to the destruction of ag land. I appreciate that. It still leaves me standing here with a big chunk of my land that's going to be taken from me, and I believe that there's maybe other alternatives. The proposed alignment cuts an offensive angle across a farm purchased by me with the help of my family when I was only 20 years old, leaving me with point or angled rows which are difficult to farm. They cause pollution with fertilizer applications with chemicals because of the fact that equipment is made to run square, not at angles, so as you go into these rows, everything is now you have to overlap some, which is putting more fertilizer than what's needed and more seed and more cost. Every bit of it becomes expensive. The west side of my farm, where the existing road of Elverno, is, is straight, so there isn't any of this, and now there will be with the proposed alignment of the road. My wife and I have spent our whole lives, along with my parents, working to pay this off. Farming is what we do. It's all we do. My family has been on this land, or portions of this land, for 53 years. My parents bought the home place where we live 53 years ago. Five separate land purchases make up our home and our family farm. Our son will return someday to farm this land, and he will hold it for his children. Please try to understand that this land is not for sale. We have not asked for this, and to us, this is irreplaceable. It's God's land, and I've been put here as a steward to care for this land. How does one put a value on something that is intended to go to your grandchildren? And yet, the county has made me no offer, and today you guys are going to vote on the fact that you're going to either condemn or take this eminent domain. You're going to take this land from my family, which is intended to go to my grandchildren. My parents have all of their land already entrusted to me, which will flow through to my son and to his children. Three miles to the west of us, on this same County Road 78 project that was completed just recently completed, there's basically the same issue. The road went from 235th Street and dropped down to 240th Street. That's three miles to the west of me, and now, all of a sudden, when we get to my farm, we have to go at an angle. We can't do T intersections, and they do have, the engineering firm has good, they absolutely have good reasons why it's difficult to do it, but there are other options that could be done on my farm that have not been entertained. My family and neighbors have, we could write a book about the concerns we have for this project. This project cuts deep into our 500-plus contiguous acres of our family farm that we proudly share the love and responsibility to care for. Recently, my neighbors have started to share with me details that have been shared with them for plans for the land on the west side of the proposed road through my farm that include ponds and nitrogen management systems, which no one has ever mentioned to me or to my family. So we are unaware of what it is, and this has kind of been somewhat of how the whole project has went. I believe we need to be transparent, and to be truly transparent to be effective with our communities, all of us do, and this doesn't seem to be happening completely. It is some, but not completely. This project severely affects my ability to make a living and to support my family and to maintain our family's way of life. There are other ways that this project could be completed, and I ask you to please consider the huge impact that this has on our family and our community. If you guys are interested, I can share the acres that are affected in this total thing. If you're not, it doesn't, I'm sure John has probably got a better example of them, or at least what your surveyors have come up with. I can give you the ones that I've come up with. But this project forces me and my family and everybody, when these projects are done, it forces people into capital gain sales, and you guys heard me just say, "I intend to give this to my grandchildren." There should be no capital gains for us in this, and yet, we're forced into it. And there's ways to reduce that impact on us. There is no other land in our area that I can replace. This is a 500-acre chunk of ground that we've got roads on three sides of and a farm that's not for sale to the north, so there's no way I can replace this land regardless of what I'm paid. It can't be replaced. So if we could just consider it, you know, it's an heirloom that's being broken up, if we could consider that. I guess the other one last thing is, is that affected just on this particular parcel of mine, there is an equal amount of land being taken from my farm as there is in the entire project area from the rest of my neighbors combined. So just want you guys to consider that, that there's that big of an impact just on my one parcel of land, not to mention that there's additional land being taken from my parents and from the rest of our family. So again, I thank you all for your time, and I wish that you maybe could consider the impact that this has on our family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have one more speaker? Members, just for, this is item 8.5, Consent Agenda. I'm not sure if that was clear.
Good morning. My name is Naomi Wagonconnect. My address is 1097 245th Street East, Farmington, Minnesota, and I'm here to represent our son. He has been farming since he bought it when he was at the age of 20. This June, he will have the entire farm paid for, and I'm here to tell you that I could not be more proud of our son and how he has handled all this difficult situation of the thought of knowing that progress, progress is important, but progress is very hard on our farm right now, and I have put all of this whole situation in God's hands because that's how we do things at our house. And I want to thank you for all the hard work that you do to make everything work the best it can. I'm just praying today that God has a different plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, at Physical Development, last week, we reviewed this item, and I, John, do you mind coming up, please? Thank you. It was mentioned that there could possibly be maybe one more option for the road. I know we discussed this last week in detail.
I don't know that there was one more option that we didn't look at. We looked at several different options. One was a realignment on the west side of the road. One was a realignment on the east side of the road, which is through Mr. Wagonconnect's property, and then we kind of looked at a straight alignment, and then we evaluated each of them, and it was clear in the valuation process that the east alignment was the preferred alignment. The west alignment is almost exactly the same as the east line, except there's a lot of different vertical profiles where we have to come down and then go back up again, so it creates sight distance problems at the driveways on each side. So the east alignment was the preferred alignment, and the project has been part of a whole system master plan that we've been working on since we turned back property to Castle Rock Township, and we took some jurisdictional transfer from Castle Rock Township. And the difference between the alignment that they did on Denmark is Denmark is a higher volume road, so rather than skewing or transitioning 78 like that, it makes more sense to go up and down north-south on Denmark because that's a lot higher volume road.
Members, I'm not sure what your pleasure is. No?
Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to have some questions and discussion and keep it on consent, or if you would prefer to go in and pull it. I guess that's the only, I have some comment questions, if you want to keep it here or if you wanted to.
Why don't we pull it so we can have a fuller discussion? Why don't we just go ahead and go along with the process? What we'll do is, when we get to the consent agenda, we'll pull it for a separate discussion, but if you don't mind sitting with us a little longer.
Oh, no.
All of you. We'll go through the rest until we get to the consent, pull that item, and then have a separate discussion on it, if that's okay.
That's true.
All right. Thank you. We'll do that, then. So next item would be approval of the agenda. If there are no additions, corrections, or deletions, could have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
And a second. Jenny, please take the role.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Next item is a presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Award from Government Finance Officers Association. Good morning, Pete.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Peter Skora, Director of Financial Services Department. The GFOA established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize the individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. The goal of the program is not to assess the financial health of participating governments, but rather to ensure that users of the financial statements have the information they needed to do so themselves. Nationally, the program recognizes 18% of counties, or 547. I am proud to announce that Dakota County has been recognized by the program for the 29th consecutive year. The Financial Services Department is responsible for coordination, writing, auditing, and publishing the annual financial plan report. We publish the report in the newspaper, and it's readily available on the county website. Today, I would like to recognize the work of key staff that annually prepare the report. Pam Davis, Lead Analyst; Jan Larson, Senior Analyst; and Angela Schmelzer, Senior Analyst. Thank you for your hard work, commitment to accuracy, and financial transparency. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is there any other county who's done this 29 years in a row?
Madam Chair, there may be.
Oh, okay.
But not a lot, as Pete said. And I would just add, one of the, you know, we talked last week about getting our AAA restored, and the foundation for that AAA is that audited financial statement on the information they've prepared, so it's bearing fruit.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, really, thank you again. And there is a plaque?
Here's the plaque. We have individual ears. We've ran out of space, so the GFOA now puts the smaller tabs on the side, so there's our award. Thank you.
We're going to need to do a photo. Okay, photo out. Come on. All of us. All of us. All of us. Are you with your worship? No.
Let's see. Yeah, if you can scooch a little, that would be helpful. Thank you. Excellent. Get that in the way. Yeah, that'll work. We're good. Okay. I'm going to have everyone look right at the lens, and one, two, three, and a couple more, and one more look. All right, thank you very much.
We'll move on to the next item, which is a public hearing. Item 6.1 is a public hearing to receive comments on Dakota County Fiscal Year 2019 One-Year Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Home Investment Partnerships and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs.
Good morning, Chair, Workmen, and Commissioners. This, oh, I'm going to go back to, excuse me, back to the beginning of my presentation. This is, as you stated, Madam Chair, the discussion or the presentation to you for the fiscal year 2019 Annual Action Plan. The CDA administers three federal funding programs on behalf of Dakota County. The Community Development Block Grant, which is the largest of the amounts that we receive, has the broad coverage of activities, and a portion of that is sub-granted out to the cities and townships. The CDA works with the municipalities to spend the funds, and Apple Valley, Burnsville, Eagan, and Lakeville are eligible as entitlement cities, but they've chosen to remain part of the county's entitlement program. The home funds, the home investment partnership funds, the county receives those funds as part of the Dakota County Home Consortium. That includes Anoka, Suburban Ramsey, Washington Counties, and the cities of Coon Rapids and Woodbury. The program was created to address affordable housing, and there are only four eligible uses as opposed to the 80-plus for CDVG. For the Emergency Solutions Grant Funds, those are, that's a funding program that's designed to quickly stabilize people who are experiencing homelessness or who are at risk of homelessness, and the three funding sources are principally for persons of low and moderate income. In order to receive the funds, HUD requires us to do the following: adopt a five-year consolidated plan, which is the 2015 through 2019 consolidated plan; hold an annual public hearing and adopt a one-year annual plan; and then, report annually at the end of the year with our consolidated annual performance evaluation report, or the CAPR, and this is your five of the five-year plan. For the proposed allocations, HUD released the grant amounts for the three entitlement programs on April 12th, and the presentation includes the final grant amounts that we've received for the three programs. For CDVG, the county received $1,887,578, which is a 2.8% reduction from fiscal year 2018. As approved by the board in 2010, 75% of the funds are set aside for the cities and townships, and 25% of the funds are reserved for countywide activities, which are shown on the slide. This is the breakdown of the funding for these cities and townships. All municipalities submitted applications for eligible activities that meet one of the three national objectives stipulated in federal CDVG regulations. The city's allocations are based on poverty, population, and overcrowding, and these numbers are updated annually by CDA staff. For the activities themselves, 67% of the funds will be used for housing rehab programs. The CDA runs the housing rehab program for Dakota County cities, and the city of Northfield has its own housing rehab program. 15% of the funds will be used for planning activities such as zoning code updates and engineering studies and for grant administration. This includes funds for the small cities and townships. The CDVG committee met in March and discussed the applications received from the city of Meesville and the townships of Castle Rock, Ninninger, and Ravenna, and agreed that they all should be fully funded. The maximum amount allowed by federal statute for this category, so that is planning and administration, is 20%. 14% of the funds will be used for improvements to public facilities, such as installing ADA ramps in public parks, or public services such as low-income youth or senior services. 4% of the funds will be used for neighborhood revitalization activities, such as the county's wall-strengthening program, and 1% of the funds will be used for economic development activities, such as the rehab for commercial buildings. The specific activities are broken down in the activity statement in the executive summary. For the home consortium, overall, the consortium will receive an allocation of $2,295,682, which is an 8.6% reduction from fiscal year 2018. 76% of the funds for the consortium are reserved for various affordable housing activities, and those are listed in the executive summary. 15% of the funds will be allocated for CHODO activity, which is required by federal statutes, and CHODO stands for Community Housing Development Organization, and 9% of the funds are reserved for grant administration. The grant amount shown on the slide does not include program income, and with program income, that amount is estimated to be $2,667,099. For Dakota County ourselves, we will receive an allocation of $854,223, and 72% of the funds are reserved for the preservation of affordable rental housing. 14% of the funds will be allocated for CHODO activities, which is less than the 15%, but that's acceptable since the consortium overall has a 15% allocation, and 14% of the funds are reserved for grant administration, and this is because Dakota County, as the lead, takes on extra responsibilities and requires additional time and resources to administer the program. And again, the amount shown on the slide doesn't include program income. With that, it's $958,620. For the Emergency Solutions Grant, the county will receive $164,742, which is a 2.8% increase over fiscal year 2018. Most of the funds will be used for rapid rehousing of homeless people or to help stabilize people currently housed but who are at risk of becoming homeless. 16% of the funds are reserved for emergency shelter operations, and 7.5% of the funds are used for grant administration. The public comment period opened March 15th and closed April 18th. We did not receive any comments, so haven't heard anything from the public. Because we've received the allocation on April 12th, we have until June 10th to complete the action plan and send it to HUD. So we will be back to you on May 21st to request approval of the board, or approval of the action plan. And with that, Madam Chair, we are asking that you hold the public hearing for the 2019 Action Plan, and I can stand for questions if there are any.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Slavitt, and then Commissioner Egan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you talk a little bit, so I know that the federal government constantly waits kind of till the end to let us know, and we've had years where we're thinking we're going to get a cut, and we get an increase, or we think it's going to be stable, and we get a cut.
Right.
And is there any method to the madness of why we are where we are this year with some increases in the emergency grant reductions and others?
Sure. For the CDVG program, that program was held flat in the federal funding budget, and because of the kind of soup that everything gets put into, all entitlement communities are put into the pool together, and so everyone is constantly changing depending on the poverty rates, the population rates, the overcrowding rates. So if your poverty rate goes up a little bit according to the American Community Survey, you might get a little more money. So it all just has to factor out. A 2.8% reduction isn't too bad this year, actually, considering. For the home funds, the same general criteria apply. That program was funded less in the federal budget, so that's why I think everyone got a reduction. And then for ESG, that program was actually got a little bump in federal funding, which is why we got a little bit of an increase.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Egan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Maggie, in the realm of things that's very small, but in the small cities, township category, CDVG, we had a meeting a number of weeks ago, and we set the figure at 50, I think it was 53,000.
53,000.
Did it change at all even after we found out what the funding was going to be?
Commissioner E, Chair Workman, Commissioner Egan, we held that flat, not wanting to penalize the small cities and townships. They don't get a lot of money annually. They tend not to ask for a lot of money, so we held that, took a bit out of the grant administration and a little bit out of the housing rehab funds.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You are welcome.
I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the audience to speak to this item? Once, twice, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We have a...
Move the way we close the public hearing.
Thank you. Jenny?
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. On to the consent agenda. We know we are pulling consent agenda item 8.5 for separate discussion. If there are no other additions, corrections, deletions, could have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
So move. Move.
And a second. Jenny, please take the role.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. On to the consent agenda. We know we are pulling consent agenda item 8.5 for separate discussion. If there are no other additions, corrections, deletions, could have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
So move.
And a second. Jenny, please take the role. Madam Chair? Oh, wow, yes, sorry. We have corrected documents in front of us for 8.3 and 10.1. Are they reflected in the posted agenda, or do we have to note those in the motion?
We can note it.
Okay.
It'll be available on the website.
Okay. Jenny, please take the role.
Commissioner Egan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes. Thank you. Item 8.5. Commissioner Slavitt, your comments you wanted to make.
I did. I guess, John, coming up here, though I've been, maybe I'll start with comments first and then the question for you, John, so I'll give you a little time. Yeah, I think I shared this at our committee meeting last week, and thank you all for being here, and, you know, Mark and I have spent quite a lot of time together in January and February on this part here, and I think as I shared last week at this, that in my seven years here, in my 13 years of elected office, this has been one of the most challenging experiences I've had to do, and the biggest challenge with that is that no matter what option was picked, somebody was going to be impacted and very much pained by this, and usually, and I think trying to be pragmatic, you try to find some sort of a solution that goes in, and, you know, either the pain is spread around equally or that, but this one, unfortunately, if you do one alternative, it really has a major impact on one property owner, you do another one, and it impacted the other ones with that. So I just want to, once, you know, just begin by thanking you for being here, and I know this has not been an easy process. It's been very stressful for you and for your neighbors throughout all of this, and I'm sorry that we've had to have that experience happen for you and all of your neighbors, and I know that, at the same time, want to thank the staff because they've been trying, they've been living it just like I have, just like you have, and trying to find a solution that could be in the best interest of all, and, you know, I use the example of the, that very first design on the east alignment literally bisected farmland. I mean, it was, there was no way around it. It cut a farm in half, and the other alternatives did as well, and that was something that I made very clear, is we got to stop cutting farmland in half. I made very clear, is we got to stop cutting farmland in half. There's only so much of it in this county, and we needed to do that part in there. So I guess the question that I wanted to have you up, and I probably have some comments after, is, is the, I've heard, I think they've heard at open houses, the Wagon Connects have heard of, how is this different from, from the designs just to the west of here on County Road Seventy-Eight, in terms of the two-thirty-fifth, two-fortieth, and then this situation, two-fortieth and two-forty-fifth? Why, why are they not the same? Why are they the same? What, what could, you know, what was the process that the engineers went through on that?
Chairman Workman and Commissioners, the biggest difference is Denmark is a higher-volume road, so the, it's kind of like an offset intersections with the east-west corridor coming down Seventy-Eight if you're heading west, and you go up Denmark and take a left to go on Seventy-Eight again. It was designed that way because the main corridor is Denmark Avenue. Where here, the main corridor is east-west on Seventy-Eight, there is no north-south corridor traffic, it's just an east-west corridor, so the continuity of keeping it east-west at fifty-five miles an hour was fairly important.
I don't know if there's other, anyone wants to say anything else?
Does anyone else have any comments?
We did discuss it at some length at the last meeting. I apologize how you weren't at that meeting when we had it at the committee level, and so we had some conversations just about the background of it, also about, the township did not take a position, which even though that sometimes is customary for them to take a position on, on realignments, we've, we've asked if they wanted to, and they felt that this was really a county road, and it was the decision of the seven of us up here to make that decision. They did go in and acknowledge the fact that we were trying, that we went and tried to find some alternatives. We tried to, you know, the township had asked to look at a straight alignment, so, at the request of some of the residents, so that was looked at. They did, they did, are the ones who actually addressed some of the concerns of speed, which were incorporated into the resolution to do an advisory speed of forty-five miles an hour at the curve instead of fifty-five, as well as do a speed study with the state of Minnesota to determine if that, that curve could be at a slower speed permanently. So that was one of the things that was requested of the township and was incorporated into this resolution. And then it was the township who made the point of the, of the potential ponding for the nitrates, which was in the, one of the other alignments, and was a potential for the east alignment as well, and that was, that was actually a request of the township to consider that as part of it, knowing that it was in part of the Seventy-Eight project of, West Seventy-Eight that was done a couple of years ago. So that was where that was incorporated, at the, kind of at the request of township with that part there. So that was in their letter to, to do that. So that's, if you were wondering where that kind of came out of, and, and that was the southern part of that western portion in there, was where, where that was actually a township request to be considered on that part of there, just to share you with that perspective.
I'm struggling with this one. It was so much easier when you don't see the, hear the impact, I mean, you see it on a piece of paper, and you look at it, and it's like, boy, that's cutting right through a farm. And you have even said on many occasions, Commissioner Slavik, stop cutting through the farms.
Which, which, in fairness to staff, that this isn't, I mean, and if they could show you the map of what it initially looked like, and you, you could have bought the whole farm for that one, to be quite honest, because it was literally bisecting the farm. They've moved this closer to the edge for that reason, Madam Chair.
Right, but I'm struggling with this one right now.
It's been my world for the last three months.
Yeah, my district is twenty-seven square miles, okay, so it's, your farmland's probably more than that, but...
Just over four hundred.
I don't know, I, I, well, what's your pleasure?
I just have a question, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Wagon Connect's concern, not just about the alignment, but he also raised an issue about the forced capital gain that he'd be required to take. And I recognize that we're talking about the alignment today, but if it's all right, and maybe that's for county attorney's office or, or somebody else, but I'm, what he, he made a, I wrote it down, he made a comment about there's other ways to address that. And I'm, I was intrigued by that comment. I'm wondering if that's something that anybody has, can, can fill me in a little bit about what that might be, or John, maybe?
Chairman Workman, Commissioner Atkins, I'm not sure what he means, if it's, if that's part of the appraisal process that we go through, but we haven't gotten to the appraisal process. We just evaluated impacts based on square yards of farmland, because there was a farm on the left and a farm on the right. It is one of the hardest parts of our job, is to buy property, relocate people that don't want to be relocated, and even not relocate people that want to be relocated. It is a hard part of the job, but we do evaluate it and take it seriously, and we spend a lot of time looking at the different alignments, and it was clear that the east alignment was much preferred over the other ones. But that capital gains, I'm, I'm...
So if I might, then, Madam Chair, no offense, John, but if I might ask Mr. Wagon Connect to come back up briefly, are you talking about some sort of ten-thirty-one exchange, you have the acquisition, take the price, reinvest it? That's why you started talking about other farmland not being available contiguous to yours, but can you, can you flesh out what you're talking about?
Well, I believe that there's other options that could be done on my farm that would be less intrusive. I believe there's ways this can be done in regards to the letter that our township has sent, asking for the speeds to be slowed down for the, for the protection of our residents. I believe there's other ways this could be done through my farm that would be less, that would be less destructive to the farm. And, and it seemed like we had, and with all due respect to John and everybody that's worked on this, because they deserve it, they've worked hard, but it seems like we had a roadblock where we just, it stopped, and there was going to be no more discussions about that. And I, and I, and I think there still are options to make this less destructive to my land. I gave some options that probably would be more protective of, in my eyes, because I know the land. I, I'd love to share a video with you guys, I'd like to pass my phone around, show you guys what happened with four-and-a-half inches of rain the other day on this farm where we're proposing to put a superhighway through. Please understand that in my world, I, I want to live on a gravel road. I farm, I want to live on a gravel road. I don't want to live on a Taj Mahal highway and everybody snooping and everybody being around. This is, this is a choice that my parents made fifty-three years ago, and I've stayed there because I love it, because it is me. And, and there are other options that we could do, but it seems to me like it's just been, there's been one roadblock after the next roadblock, after the next roadblock. And, I mean, I appreciate, Mr. Slavik, I appreciate him completely saying that we got to stop wrecking these farms. We, we do need to do it, because we don't have anymore. And, and, you know, personally, I obviously don't, I don't see the need for this, but the engineers and the, and the projection show that there's a need for it. But I believe there's a way to keep this road on its existing course and make it work, and maybe there's an alignment that could be done on the south end of this curve, on the south curve, that would be less intrusive to me, be less intrusive to my grandchildren, you know, because you guys got to understand, I haven't had a chance in my life to invest in a 401K. My investment is this land, and, and that's what I have, and it, there has been, there is no money in this business right now. First off, it's, it's a horrible place to be right now economically in farming. You guys are all, you're all well aware of that. But to, but to now have my local government just say, well, we're going to snatch a chunk of your land, too, and just take that much more of my ability to be able to make a living away, is really, really hard to handle. And, you know, John's understood that, he's, he's listened to me, and so has the majority of the staff, has all listened to that. But there is other options, and I'd appreciate if you guys could possibly put some more, allow us to put more time into this before the final decision is made. I want to work with these guys. I don't want to say no. I don't want to push everybody away. I just would like to have an opportunity to do something that's, that's better for our community, that I believe is better for our community. So if that helps, if that helps.
And, Madam Chair, Mr. Wagon Connect, you're a very articulate fellow, and I appreciate, when I was listening to you, I heard other options relative to the road. I also heard other options relative to the acquisition and the price that was paid, and how that might be structured so that there weren't the capital gains. That's also something we, you know, if the alignment happens the way it's proposed to happen here, we don't want to make it doubly painful for you if there's another way to avoid some of those capital gains that you'd otherwise encounter.
And, and, I'm sorry.
I just, I see Mr. Stassen, our county attorney, is maybe looking to weigh in on us as well.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I don't know the particular financial situation of the owners of the farm, but I think, you know, generically, what we're referring to is a ten-thirty-five-like kind exchange under the Internal Revenue Code. So when a sale, forced sale like this occurs, there may be opportunities to take that money, purchase similar agricultural land, and effectuate a like-kind exchange where there is no, you know, there is no realization of the increase in value of the land to avoid the capital gains. But that's very particularized to an individual's financial situation and what they wish to do, and if land somewhere within reasonable distance is available, there's other factors to consider, but there is a process for, for that type of an exchange.
Thank you. That answers my...
I'm going to make a suggestion. It'll probably go over like a lead balloon, but I'm going to do it anyway. Can staff just work one more time on the alignment of the road here? You're convinced that there is a way to, to do this without fully and mortally impacting your land, and I, I would like to see that option if possible. I don't know how anyone else on the board feels, but would you mind doing that, taking another look at the alignments, please?
Chairman Workman? I mean, we could, but, but it, it comes down to lowering our standards. We have a fifty-five mile an hour design standard. If we drop it to forty-five miles an hour, you could come with a curb that looks different, has less impact on this farm, but it's going to have more impact on, on the two other houses, because it's going to go through their property more. Leaving it on the existing alignment was, I mean, we looked at it, but that's not a real option for, for a county road, because it's, it's, it's not just for the locals to use the road, it's for the commuter traffic that goes east-west on the road, and the fifty-five mile an hour design standard is kind of what we design most of our roads to.
Well, I'm at your mercy.
I'm sure I agree with you. I mean, I, I get that, and by the way, my attendance at last week's meeting was bad, too. I was out of town, so I didn't get a chance to, to hear this, and I, I don't want to put this board in a, in an awkward position, but, but if the discussion wasn't able to happen fully, and my understanding is you weren't able to make it to that meeting last week either. If it...
He was, it was, he was told he probably didn't need to attend. That's what I was...
Well, in any event, y'all weren't there. There wasn't the discussion with the parties involved, and it feels awkward to have that discussion as we sit here at the board when, when Mr. Wagon Connect has talked about other options. Our staff may have a different approach, but unless it's going to mortally delay the project, which I don't think it will be to have one more visit about it, and then bring it back, I don't really see a downside to it. So, Madam Chair, if that's your inclination, I'd be happy to go along with that.
Madam Chair, can I bring, maybe Steve might be able to, and John, maybe you can as well, does making a decision on the twenty-first, John can handle that one, because I know that this, we've, we've kind of been extending the, this conversation longer than I think was in the original CIP. So it's, I think there was an expectation that this was probably going to be addressed and resolved initially in, I think it was March, but what happened is, is we actually had, you know, and that might have been some of the role I played in some of this, was to try to look at more alternatives. The residents and the, and the township were asking for a third alignment, you know, because there was really not one that just kind of made sense, and, and, you know, one of them went through, as, as Mr. Wagon Connect can tell you, the, the alternative for the straight alignment was somewhat of conversations that him and I had had, and then that opened up a whole different conversation amongst other people in the township that, you know, including some you're related to, who went and said, wait a second here, what are you proposing? And, you know, so that's, some of that, I guess my question is if, we, we were already a couple of months out from where we were, and at that point, does an extra two weeks to maybe continue conversations that I'm happy to be part of or be away from, depending on what you feel is in the best interest of all that, does two weeks make a difference?
Chairman Workman, Commissioners, we've had the appraiser under contract for almost a year now, and he hasn't done any work out there. We were getting close to, you know, once we adopt alignment, probably start staking things and looking at what the impacts are and getting the appraiser going to work. Another year delay, I mean, we're getting close to where it'd be, just moving the CIP. Two weeks delay might not change anything, I honestly can't say. But it, it does seem to be, have been delayed for almost a year now. The hard part is, we have looked at the other alignments, including forty-five mile an hour curves, and, and there was impacts on other property owners that were more severe and, and a less desirable alignment because of the grade change. We feel that the option we chose was probably the best.
Well, the...
On that question there, I think the case was made based on this, that though the impact is mostly exclusively on Wagon Connect family for the east alignment, that the, you know, as the scoring went in there, that the east alignment, what I think Commissioner, our Chair Workman was saying, last week, I think there was a comment that was made, and it was made by me, what I was related by staff, was that there may, you know, this is kind of, we're really picking the east alignment, and it may shift this many feet one way or the other way, you know, kind of on that part there, working with the landowner and, you know, the, once it kind of gets out there, but, but that really was picking an east alignment over a west alignment over a straight alignment. And, so I understand even some of the conversations that may want to be having are, is there a better way to do the east alignments, realizing kind of like, that is really where we're all kind of on, we're not, we're not opening up a, a conversation on the west alignment or a straight alignment, but is, is there a way to maybe have some, maybe some concessions, maybe that needs to go in there, maybe some other conversations, to do the east alignment that may be a little bit more appeasable?
Or minimize the impact on the farm?
So, so I think that that's the conversation that, I don't think we're, anyone, at least I'm not one who is really ready to start having more conversations all over again on the west alignment or the straight alignment. This was just more of a, can we get our designers and, to get together and maybe, and, and to be quite honest, the end result may be a staff recommendation that this is really what makes sense, but if we could do a two-week to go in and sit everybody down there one last time when we're not, because throughout all this discussion, we've been talking about, it might be west, it might be straight, and this is really saying, it's okay if the alignment is the east, how do we go in and make it look in the best interest of everybody and see if we can put our heads together and pencils to the paper and, and try one more time to do something? So that's what I would recommend, if, if, it sounds like we, where we are, as long as we're not talking about this, and if we can make the, that we're committing to May twenty-first to, to go through this, to give one last chance to...
May seventh through May twenty...
Oh, May seventh, oh, I guess we, I'm still in April. Sorry, yeah, May seventh, we have two weeks, I already thought it was May seventh, sorry. Yeah, so two weeks, so at our next board meeting on May seventh, to be able to go in and have that, that's a very tight timeline, but I'm willing to be a part of it, or I'm, as I said, I'm willing, if you want to just work with staff and, and make that case, I'm willing to do that.
Commissioner Egan?
Well, that raises an interesting point. Would we be better off bringing this back on May seventh, or would we be better off actually scheduling this on the next physical development committee meeting?
I think we need to...
No, we need to get it done.
May seventh, I think.
May seventh.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll move to table the motion until the May seventh meeting, and request that staff work with the landowner on some tweaking of the east alignment.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Well, and I would, you know, I, it's, it's, it's wrenching when longtime family properties are impacted. I know a project in Lakeville, you know, took a family off property that was owned by the woman's grandfather, and siblings and cousins lived along that road, but the other part of it is, is that if we don't make the right decision, it has impacts for generations. There was a, in Western Lakeville, there was a Hatfield and McCoy fight in which a road over by Orchard Lake was terminated and didn't, you know, head south down to One Hundred and Eighty-Fifth Street, it's the judicial road, and the impacts now for safety, getting fire, police, just... traffic movements, those are really negative impacts if we don't make the right decisions. And obviously, we've seen our need for east-west roads across the southern part of the county that have to function and can't, you know, if we were to make, you know, in my mind, it doesn't make sense to leave it as is with the tees. We have to build a road that will, with an alignment that will function for our generations in this county, and I, I'm sorry that it's really impacting your family, but as policymakers, if we make the wrong decision, then lots and lots of people live with it for a really long time as well. So we have to balance those interests, and it's never fun, but that's our job as policymakers to make sure that when there are hard decisions, we have to make them with an eye towards not only the immediate ramifications, but ramifications for decades and generations as well. And I apologize for that, it's not fun.
Your points are very well made, and you're right. And I agree with you, but I, I'm hoping, well, we have a motion and a second to ask staff to just sharpen that pencil one more time on the east alignment and see if there's anything that can be done to minimize the impact on the farm. And it comes back May 7th, and I won't be here, May 7th, so you're gonna run the meeting.
So you're the chair, okay.
So if there are no further comments on that, thank you for the motion and the second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto the regular agenda. Item 12.1, appointment to the Public Art Citizens Advisory Committee. Commissioner Egan.
Madam Chair, I think this item might be a little bit easier than the last item. We have an application for the at-large youth member to the Public Art Citizens Advisory Committee by Lily Isle, and I would move that, that's motion, that application.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second that. Lily is a constituent of mine.
The name reminds me of The Sound of Music for some reason, I don't know.
Yeah, he's like, evil vice.
Jenny, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item 13.1, authorization to execute contract with Kimble Horn and Associates for preliminary and final design engineering consultant services for County Project 26-54 and 63-27 in the cities of Eagan and Inver Grove Heights. Mr. Sasse.
Good morning, Chairman Workman and Commissioners. I'm here to talk about authorization to execute a contract with Kimble Horn for preliminary engineering and final design of, of a, a major road through Eagan and Inver Grove Heights, Lone Oak, 70th Street, or Casadee 63, and the extension of 63 North. So I'm gonna talk a little about the project history and location. There's a long range of history on this project. It goes back longer than 2010 when we adopted the visioning study, but, so I'll go through some of the project location history, the request for proposals that we sent out, the selection rationale on how we picked the consultant, project schedule, project budget, and action item. The project location is the area of Inver Grove Heights in Eagan, that's one of the larger undeveloped areas in, in, in the county, and it is developing rather quickly. You know, you're familiar with the Vikings area that developed there. Inver Grove has been extending San Terry Sewer through this area for the last couple of years, so the whole area is kind of boiling over, ready to develop. A couple of years ago, we built 6325, which was the, the realignment of the intersection of 55. We moved it a little bit south and then extended 26 or 63 north through there as a four-lane and two-lane divided section on a new alignment. This is part of, there was a study a couple of years after the, the visioning study that adopted 63 alignment that went north-south where that alignment would be, it's kind of a follow-up to the visioning study, and that, this is part of that alignment. Right now, we're building a roundabout at 3 and Robert Street and 70th Street in Inver Grove Heights. The roundabout is designed to accommodate the four-lane section east-west on 70th Street. The city, in green there on the top, city is building 65th Street from Trunk Highway 3 to the west. Last year, they built the turn lanes on Trunk Highway 3. It actually had about a 10-foot cut to get the hill down so they could build the turn lanes, and that, they're extending that to the west. And then this is the project we're talking about today, 2654, which is about three and a half miles of road from 55 to Trunk Highway 3. And as part of that project, we're gonna extend 63 north and then connect it back over to existing 63 with this project. So the red and the yellow are the current projects we're here today to talk about. This is the future project that we're gonna be studying, is extending 63 up to 494 and building an interchange there. We have some money in the budget to revisit the visioning study, and then next year, we'll be doing a more in-depth study of that. And then this is the alignment that would connect it over to Viking Boulevard from 65th Street, so that would be a continuous local connection east-west. And this is a trail alignment that the planning department, Parks Department, has been working on for a few years, and as part of our federal grant application, as part of our 26 project, we're gonna put in a pedestrian underpass with our project to keep the greenway going. Part of the project background is, is in 2010, they did the regional roadway visioning study, which evaluated several different alignments for the growing area of Eagan and Inver Grove Heights, and, and for the, the development impacts and what was needed to produce a, a good system plan. Part of that plan, there were several alternatives. The county board adopted alternative E. Right now, we're working on alternative A, which is kind of the, expand the existing system, and part of that was the Lone Oak expansion, which is this project, the 65th Street project that the city is doing, and, and they're only doing part of it, we're not doing the whole thing. They're doing from Trunk Highway 3 to the west, eventually they'll work their way over to Babcock to the east, and then Argenta Trail expansion. The project purpose is to, to meet future development needs and, and current needs because the area is developing. We actually have quite a bit of the right-of-way for the 63 alignment with the Blackstone Vista plat that we have 100 and, 265 feet of right-of-way there, because that's gonna be a principal arterial, so we have 200 feet of right-of-way for the road and 65 feet of right-of-way for the electric easement, the relocation of the electric line. So the goal of this is to provide transportation system that supports regional and local needs. What the table is showing is some of the traffic projection numbers from the regional visioning study in 2010. Alternative A is what we're kind of building now, so that's, and alternative E was the adopted alternative that includes the interchange. You can kind of see some of the, the huge growth numbers when the interchange is built, particularly the, the third one down, it's almost a 200% increase in traffic volume once we get the interchange built, so it, it, it's gonna be a major principal arterial through, through, east-west, or north-south, but at this time, we're just building a two-lane divided section. The study phases, we're gonna complete the, we've completed the scoping contract, we had a contract, Kimble Horn was the, the original preliminary engineering company, did some of the scoping contract work. We looked at drainage alignments, impacts, and, and profile grade, and we had a fairly extensive public engagement, and we had a recommendation of what the preferred alignments were in the profile grade and the ponding. This is the project, 70th Street, Lone Oak Road, from 55 on, on the west to Trunk Highway 3 on the east, and, and this is the 63 corridor from 55 on the south to 65th on the north. Issues and challenges with the project are utilities. We have a, a major transmission line that'll need to be relocated in different phases as the project progresses north, and Magellan pipeline that we've talked about with the roundabout project. We have MCI that's sharing easement with Magellan, and then we have a lot of drainage standards in the area. The glaciers didn't do us a big favor in Inver Grove Heights in that area, that Inver Grove Heights actually doesn't have any outlets, so everything has to infiltrate in that area. It's a, it's a really unique area, and then we have a very detailed public... I'm blaming the glaciers.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just, because this is the one area that I, I get the most comments from, from the residents, is the drainage, and this is, will be a, a big challenge in this area, and I appreciate that. Part of what you're doing as you move forward with this project is to try to address some of the drainage issues that the residents have been feeling for decades. Appreciate that.
Taking glaciers?
Glaciers maybe, it's longer.
We have a very detailed public engagement process too with the project. I, I know the board's been paying attention to the different public engagement strategies that we're doing on projects, and, and we have a very thorough work plan in our, in our schedule that the consultants put together that we're gonna work through with the public engagement, and we've done a very thorough public engagement up to this point in the scoping. And then staging and detour plan is gonna be really important for this project, because even though it's a, it's a rural two-lane road today, it is a major thoroughfare for people to get in and out, there isn't a whole lot of other alternatives, and then we're gonna have impacts on the new Vikings facility too, and reconstruct some of that area there in Eagan. And then the greenway connection's an important part. The request for design proposals was sent out to four consulting firms. Three firms proposed on the project. We evaluated the proposals with three county staff and, and the city of Inver Grove and city of Eagan, and we did a thorough evaluation, and we determined Kimble Horn was the best value consultant. The scope of services included a public engagement process, detailed survey and, surveying and mapping. This is gonna, there's a lot of rural area in here, so there's a lot of drain fields in the front yard with the wells that we have to evaluate the impact on them and what that means to the people. Geotechnical analysis to determine infiltration rates. It'll require an environmental assessment, EAW, because it's more than two miles of expansion. Traffic analysis to determine the right intersection control, drainage analysis and design, right-of-way planning, because it, it is a significant right-of-way expansion corridor, and utility coordination of preliminary and final design. The criteria used to evaluate the, the three consultants that proposed on the project was project understanding, project approach, project team and experience, quality control, performance in similar projects, and best value of the cost proposal. They were the more expensive consultant of the three, but their, their cost proposal was more detailed, and, and they did suggest a few add-ons that we added on to the project that'll make it a better project. So Kimble Horn's team proposal included project area familiarity. They were part of the original north-south alignment for 63 study, and then they're part of the preliminary engineering for 63 and 25. They had a very detailed, effective public engagement plan. Their design team with the storm sewer design experience in this sense to the area of Dakota County, they've worked with the city on other projects in Inver Grove Heights in Eagan with their stormwater, and they had the highest hours but lowest rate. The project schedule is, we award the contract to the consultant today, begin design work in May, complete preliminary design in November, complete final design in November of 2020, right-of-way process 19 to 20, and then construction will be in 2021. Part of this project is, it's, it's a very unique project, it kind of came together at the last moment. At the legislation last year, Inver Grove Heights got 6.2 million in funding that was dedicated to the city, so that'll be part of their local contribution, because in the legislation, it was specific to Inver Grove Heights, and then we recently got 7 million in federal money through the regional solicitation, so we have about 13 million in, in additional It's, it's a $38.5 million project, so it is a big project, but as, when you look at that number, and part of, and I didn't, don't recollect what the whole regional visioning study, alternative E cost is gonna be, but, but it, 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 it's a small piece of the whole vision study, so it, it, it's a big number, but it's a small piece of the bigger So I'm here today to recommend authorization to execute a contract with Kimble Horn and Associates for Preliminary and Final Design Engineering Consultant Services for County Project 2654 and 6327 in the city of Eagan and Inver Grove Heights.
Questions? Comments? Well, you got a little bit of everything in this. It's like the scope of services, it's like, yeah, that's about it, that's about it, everything. Okay, if there are no questions or comments, could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Jenny, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Have fun.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners.
Okay, we are on to item 14.1, which are closed executive sessions, 14.1, 1.2, and 1.3. With that, I am going to turn to Commissioner Egan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we've got three projects, all with resolutions of settlement. The first one, 14.1, is with County Road Project 42-139 and the assorted farms LLC in Ninniger Township, and there is a resolution authorizing a settlement. It seems reasonable, and I would move that resolution.
Okay. Yeah, my motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, any further discussion? Not, Jenny, please take the roll.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
14.2, Commissioner Egan.
14.2, Madam Chair, also involves County Road 42, it's Project 42-82 in Rosemount, involving the Kenneth J. and Barbara M. Angerman property. There's a resolution authorizing settlement. I would move the resolution.
My motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussions? Seeing, Jenny?
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
And then 14.3.
14.3, Madam Chair, involves Wescott, County Road Project 8-21 in the city of West Hall, the property of David and Kyla Meyer. There's a resolution authorizing settlement there, and I would move that resolution.
Is there a second?
Second. And it's on Wentworth, just to clarify.
Okay, on Wentworth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say Wescott?
Yeah, you said Wescott, which is in Eagan.
Thank you, thank you. Better not be Wescott.
Jenny, please take the roll.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Onto inter-agency announcements and reports, Association of Minnesota Counties.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple things, we did have our board meeting last Friday, a couple of items of note. First of all, we did pass a resolution on, you may or may not be aware of, some federal legislation on Family First Preventative Services Act of Congress. There's a little bit of money, a whole lot of rules, then the state kind of takes in there, maybe gives a little bit of money and adds a whole lot of rules on that. Well, the Minnesota Counties and Maxx of the Social Service Agency have kind of been working together to find a, kind of, the, the principles in that, approved county principles implementation that the, will be able to go in there. They worked really hard, they had some very... state of Minnesota in this to be what it would be in other county or other states throughout the country. So, that resolution was approved. Second thing of note on there, we did have the Commissioner of Transportation, Margaret Anderson Keller, who came to the board to kind of talk a little bit. We'd actually asked her not to go and give the governor's pitch because we all knew it. And we also tried to push a little bit on some of our own feeling, put a little bit more with sharing our county experiences with transportation and working with MinDOT, and a little less of her and the governor's proposal realizing that that really, we knew it. We did not need to kind of move on that part. There was a very good discussion. She stayed about 20 minutes longer than was anticipated. And, you know, because that's just like, I think, the entire state of Minnesota. People are very divided on how to fund transportation and what should be, what is the appropriate way to do it and how they're, so I think the makeup of all 87 Minnesota counties represented on the Minnesota Counties Board shares those same challenges. Yeah. So, we had some very passionate people on both sides of that. So, ultimately, it was more of the impacts of the county-state aid formula, the impacts of the role that counties are playing in the transportation system. And then, lastly, the fact of MinDOT adding more and more pressure to have counties take a greater role in financing state projects and the impact of what that means for that. And then, I think just a third thing is that, so you're aware that Commissioner McDonough has termed out of the NACO board. So, if there's anyone interested in serving on the NACO board, as Commissioner Schuylard had served in the past, that that position just was announced open today. And any eligible county commissioner can do that one. And then, lastly, just kind of share a quick couple of updates as many of us have worked with some of the staff. Ann Kilsner, who's probably one of the longest policy analysts with AMC, is leaving at the end of session. She's going to go work as the Assistant Director of the Hennepin-Carver Workforce Board. So, Ann will be leaving AMC. And then, Eric Rathman, who's been the MACSA Director for all this time, is leaving. He is actually going to take the county position at DHS, which kind of works on county relations. It's the position that our Dakota County staffers, Kate Lerner, who was the previous Executive Director of MACSA, went to DHS prior to coming to Dakota County. So, they're kind of shaping that one in there in that position. I believe he's starting this week or next week right-of-way because there was a feeling that he's actual, we need a county perspective at DHS far more than we need to have an Executive Director of MACSA in between everybody else. They could kind of pool the resources and kind of cover the legislative side. But DHS kind of needs to understand what's happening at the county level. And that position has sat vacant for a while. So, getting that person in there while there's still a few weeks of legislative session was important. And that's all I have.
Wow. That's a lot. Thank you. Dakota Broadband Board?
We met two weeks ago. We narrowed the search for an Executive Director from a very well-qualified group of 16, I believe it was, down to five. So, we're getting there.
Okay. Thank you. Legislative Worker?
We have a meeting scheduled as soon as this meeting breaks up. So, I'll save the discussion for that. The one update generally is that the leadership set some deadlines that are unique this year. May 1st for finance bills to get off the floors of each body. May 6th for targets, joint targets of both the House and Senate. And then, May 13th for conference committee reports. That's well ahead of the typical schedule if they can actually meet it.
Metropolitan Emergency Services Board?
Nothing new to report.
Minnesota Inter-County Association?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair. Work continues at the legislature. A lot of what Mike is doing is also related to the transportation issues. I'm going to kind of combine a little thing here. Also had TAB meeting last week. And what's interesting is in the transportation bill, they sent a portion of the new money in the House Transportation Bill to TAB. No one's ever talked to TAB. The chairman is completely unaware of it. We took no position. So, I don't know what's going to happen with moving money to TAB for distribution across the metropolitan area. It's different, unique, and something that no one has bothered to ask TAB about. The MICA Board will meet again May 8th.
Metropolitan Mosquito Control District, we have a full board meeting tomorrow. Minnesota Valley Transit Authority?
Nothing new to report.
National Association of Counties, NACO. Anything? Nothing? Okay. Vermillion River Water should joint powers board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do meet this Thursday.
Workforce Development Board, Metropolitan Workforce Council?
Couple of things. Last Friday, the, our Dakota Scott Workforce Board met, had a presentation from Patricia Fenrick. She works out of the Department of, the State Department of Human Services, but it's under a federal job, which is the refugee resettlement program. And it's just, it's an amazingly high number of individuals who resettle that are actually asylees and refugees as opposed to just regular immigration. At any rate, there was an interesting presentation and its impact and some requirements for employers and such on other workforce. And I have a couple of extra sheets. There's some statistics on foreign-born populations in Dakota County and Scott County, which is our workforce service area. I've got a couple of extra copies if anyone's just haven't taken a look at these. There's just some fascinating numbers on that. And on the personnel front, Commissioner Slavik mentioned Ann Kilsner. Now, she was through the, well, AMC is where she worked out of. But she, for the last 15 years, she has been the Executive Director of the Minnesota Association of Workforce Boards. So, she's also going to be leaving that capacity. And then, also, our local Dakota Scott Workforce Board Chair, Mark Loftus, you probably know from Dakota Electric, it's their economic development. He is retiring this summer. And so, he'll be moving on to other things. And we'll be looking for a new chair for that group there. So, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other reports? Anything else to report? Christopher Gaylord? Just very quickly, we had a very nice event for recognizing volunteers at the Minnesota Zoo. And thank you to everyone that participated in that and to the staff for putting that on. I think the volunteers greatly appreciate that recognition. And that's always a fun event. It is. It's a lot of fun. Commissioner Slavik, did you have something?
Yeah, I have two things, Madam Chair. First of all, you know, in our consent agenda, we did go and pass the Minnesota Counties' transportation resolution. And I did forget to point that prior to today, there were 57 counties, I believe, that had already supported that. And I think they're on today's agenda throughout the state. I think another 15 were going to be discussed or passed. So, we're getting close to all 87 counties passing that resolution. And second thing, I just wanted to make note of, I know some of you who've served on the county board for a long time, they, and one of our commissioner, longtime commissioner to the south, who's its current Good Hugh County Commissioner, Ron Allen, who unfortunately was diagnosed with cancer, has recently passed away. So, I know, we don't all necessarily interact with Good Hugh County as much as I do, but just want to send condolences to his family for that. And he's been a long-time battle, but has still been attending meetings and working the best he can. So, I just wanted to make note and share that if you have not seen that.
Thank you. Anything? County Managers Report?
All right. Well, Madam Chair and Commissioners, first, just to add on to Commissioner Gaylord's comment about the nice event for the volunteers. I checked with staff and I think there were over 600 volunteers and their families that attended. So, I want to add my thanks to that. A second thing to mention is, I think you saw in the update, but it's worth mentioning again, is that the latest Census Bureau count of our population came out and we're up in up to 425,000 people, which is 3,600-plus growth from last year. And in terms of the credit for the growth, about a little over two-thirds of the credit goes to new babies and the other third to people and their families who moved here from other places. So, as we say, it's one of our success indicators, is people who choose Dakota County and they keep doing that. The last thing I'll mention is that we now have Met Council Chair Slavik and our Met Council members tentatively lined up for the June 11th committee meeting. And she would like to come and make a short presentation and then stay for a more informal discussion with the board. So, we'll look forward to that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.[1731.53]